And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item is this consent agenda.
Would you approve the consent agenda as presented? Second?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Mayor roll call, please. Kate?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any political comment this evening? Okay, then we will move on then to our first item, which is considering a water bill dispute, but I don't believe that person's here.
No, but yeah. I'll wait till the end to make sure.
Recirculate?
A little time.
Okay, good point. So then let's go with the second reading of ordinance 2019-20, which is the supplemental appropriations budget.
Yes, and this is just a cleanup for the end of the year and no changes from May 12th. The first reading.
Want to approve ordinance 2019-20 supplemental appropriations question? Second?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Mayor roll call, please. Kate?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item, thank you, is the considering and authorize the mayor to sign a 2020 animal control services and impoundment facility operations agreement.
Yes, and there was really no change to this other than the amount went from 143 a month to 148, $148.40. And Nate has reviewed it and needs also sign the approval to form.
I'm going to approve, I'm going to approve authorize or authorize the mayor to sign the 2020 animal control services and impoundment facilities operations agreement with the Sioux Falls area of the main society. Second?
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Mayor roll call, please. Kate?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Fur?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda, our business agenda, is the Code of Ethics.
All right, you had asked to kind of parse out these three pieces so we could take them on one at a time. The first one was lobbying, and I did want to add a little bit to the lobbying one. There is already a prohibition in personnel manual for staff representing somebody while currently staff. So I couldn't, I couldn't represent Boy Scouts to this board. Ask for the personnel manual. So that's there in effect. So what we would still be lacking is something that stops the council from doing that during their current time on council, and then something that stops council or staff after their time as staff or council. And whether or not you feel the need to do that.
Is this trying to find a solution for a problem that doesn't exist?
Possibly. You know, because again, I just wanted to highlight the areas that other ethics things spoke to that ours didn't. So I'm not trying to say that there's a need for it or anything.
I've been back, I mean, this is one I've been back and forth about that enforcement. For me, the politics thing really doesn't, I don't care either way.
And the lobbying and the politics, to keep in mind too.
It can be very intertwined.
Right, but what I was also going to add was it's legally easier to restrict staff's actions without interfering with their constitutional rights. When in previous discussions about things with the attorney, it's easier for you to say staff can't do that. They can't come and represent. They can't be a part of a political campaign, things like that, than it is for you guys. You guys kind of retain more of your constitutional rights than we do as staff. If that makes sense. There might always be a difference in how track staff versus full-time staff is treated versus council.
I guess my thing is is that, we just had a comment, I'm sorry, after you said that. Oh, I don't think there's anything that at our level that would, that either of these really, I mean, like you said, unless some of these of the Boy Scouts or, but I think, I think in the past, we've always been very ethical about saying, I'm not here to represent whatever. I'm here to represent the Boy Scouts. So.
I guess I have any, since I'm a Boy Scout since I'm the one on the board that would, in that kind of instance, I would not want myself to be the representative to be, to come to us. I would abstain from it because obviously I have a, I have a horse in the race, but. I don't know if there's a way to add this, to word it at this time, there is no,
I think.
No restrictions on lobbying. Just leave it as now and if it becomes an issue, address it.
Okay, so maybe what I'm hearing is no action on lobbying?
I think that's a fair statement.
Yeah.
Politics. I did want to add, again, there's a staff restriction that already is in place through the personnel manual. Very vague and get probably written that way, so it's not in your constitutional rights, and I'll just read that for you. Employees are encouraged to exercise their right to vote in city elections, but shall not engage in or participate in, near the way in state elections, except with permission of the governing body and as otherwise permitted by law. Failure to comply with this provision may result in disciplinary action. It goes on a little bit more, but it's not directly to this point.
So that's really just saying on a local level?
Yes, absolutely. Nothing about that, you know, party politics or partisan politics.
Which, like I said at the last meeting, it doesn't really pertain to us or, like I said, it could, but as it states now is that we're not, we're not listed with the D or R I or whatever, but limit the staff person from saying.
Employees are encouraged to exercise their right to vote in any election, but shall not engage in or participate in any other way of state elections.
So I guess that would be, I would consider signing petition considering participation.
Well.
But then with permission of the government and otherwise permitted by law, I'm permitted by law to sign a petition if I am, right? By already legal requirements. I'm thinking where this was going with probably yard signs, being a volunteer knockers, you know, things like that, but.
I think anyone else almost can help.
Right, but it's a little vague. I wish they maybe had used the word campaign instead of election. Elections, I think, are the neutral part. We're talking about the campaign that's different.
I guess I'm still on the same realm where I was last meeting is that for us, the concern is what can we do? Do we have the money for it? What can we do? I mean, it's not really a partisan, it's not really a partisan politics discussion.
I think doesn't Sioux Falls today's, I know a lot, this last election, a lot of employees are just like, I'm backing out. I'm not going to say if I like this person or I don't like this person. Is that something we can have as a policy, like a, no, no enforcement or no distraction of a candidate, but you know what I'm saying?
No public statement of preference or something?
I don't know. I don't know.
And I think in Sioux Falls too, some of what's going on there is they have their units protecting them, you know, like the police unit publicly taken the non stance, but had the bill into in that last mayoral election. So that also kind of concludes things up there in terms of. So maybe some type of public acknowledge, you know, endorsements or something like that. I'm thinking on that.
Or do you think that's free speech infringement? Because I have.
It may not be unethical, but it may be a bad idea.
Right.
Like if you go hard against someone and then another person gets in, what does that do for staff or anybody else?
But that's happened. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is sometimes.
But then there's the nepotism side of it.
I'm sorry, explain that?
Well, you know, basically.
I signed Maxwell's petition and I got a job because of it.
Right.
Oh, God, I see what you're saying.
I could quit BoPro?
Wherever I read that before.
You heard that lately?
Yeah, what if you took, once again, the personnel policy?
Well, we don't want to be redundant. I mean, that's the nature.
Or at least just reference it and say, see, personal policy, whatever. That way if the personnel policy changes and updates, you don't have to come back and update this.
Not for staff.
Well, it's the.
Like officials.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say is that we have to remember this is also for us. It's not just city staff.
And right now it's written big enough that, you know, it doesn't need to have a section that says, this is for elected officials, not, you know. And I like that about it, but it doesn't have to stay that way.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Sorry, when you talk about like politics and publicly endorsing, are you talking about like local, your town, county, state, federal? I mean, is that what you're talking like just local and town people or state people, county people?
I think our main concern right now is local elections. I think we kind of acknowledge that partisan politics beyond the city is, is what it is. Maybe we're all free to engage how we see that it's maybe more local politics.
And I think supporting and endorsing are two different things, actually.
Yeah, I mean, just simply saying this is my support.
Or I. This is you need to.
I like this guy, this candidate as a person.
Maybe we're getting too granular. Are we getting too granular?
Possibly.
Well, and you know, I keep going back to your new comments, like are we pricking the people's free speech? You know, maybe they sit there and say if they do something like that, that they draw that distinction, we have that in the personnel management or policy for social media. Anything you comment on, if you are a city employee that you designate that, I've used, don't represent myself as an employee, but as a person. So.
Or to your point, we leave it out and if there's an issue, we bring it up, we address it.
Yeah, I know I'd be a dead horse with this, but none of this stuff that's written in stone, we can change it.
Right, but we also still need to have something.
But we don't want to be, yeah, we don't want to sit there and change everything all at once.
Okay, so I think go ahead and ask a question.
Are you not action on politics?
I think so, yes.
Yes.
Enforcement. And again, so state law provides several mechanisms for enforcement. You guys are the judgment of your own actions. You as a board can censure each other, you can remove each other. State law also clarifies who governs staff. You know, that is also very clear already that if we're acting outside of our personnel manual, and it's not just because the personnel manual says it, it's because state law says it, that again, city council by majority vote can do certain things. So there's those two forms of mechanism. But I think that there's maybe a side rail conversation enforcement that has to do with reporting. How does something get necessarily reported in a, in a, maybe a confidential way, maybe a non-confidential way? How, you know, sometimes those are enforcement and reporting are together, sometimes they're kind of separate. But is there a mechanism by which report it needs to come? I asked Nate and he said that he'll be available to talk tomorrow, whether or not they would be designated reporting party where if it could be advertised and say, hey, if you have an issue with, with staff or council conduct, send here. I'm not sure. I mean.
What concerns me with that is is then does that go against retainer? And then end up costing the city money every.
Possibly.
But I like the idea of having something neutral.
That, I agree totally.
Yeah, but I agree.
Because Nate's job is, you know, not to represent any of us, it's to represent the government entity that's here for to keep it safe.
Totally fine laws that we've.
Right, so if, if, if somebody's doing something that's going to cost the city ultimately money, you know, if I'm doing something inappropriate that the city then will have to, net open the city up to liability, it's Nate's job, you know, to stop that. So in that sense, if somebody is elected or unelected, is doing something that's exposing the city to a cost, a possible liability, having to go straight to Nate makes sense. But not everything in ethics necessarily opens this up how I feel.
Well, and the thing is, is when I teach that day ethics class, part of ethics is where you draw the line, where you draw the line versus where do you draw the line versus where I draw the line.
Some people's ethical.
And so, yeah, somebody could say, I don't like this and go to Nate. Did you have a statement? No, I'm sorry.
I thought you raised your hand too.
Oh, no, I'm just, sorry.
Okay, so we know, we know who wants first to. Can we noodle the last one? And can I, can we have some sort of like policy, like, like on our website? And so we know we're this body, right? We're the deciding body. So that takes care of that. There doesn't need to be a war. Who, what if somebody wants to go above us? Is that a Nate thing?
Is that state ethics board?
Oh, that's a good question.
For some reason, I had it in, stuck in my head that your local state attorney was responsible for investigating misconduct by other elected officials, whether that be county commissioners or cities within the county. Couldn't find the reference today. I had that stuff in my head.
Seems like that makes sense.
Yeah.
That would be a logical provision to me.
But that would be for violations of law that just exists, you know, not necessarily, even if we adopted, or when we adopted ethics, right? If somebody violating ethics, but it's not a clear violation of state law, then he's not going to take it up. So we still have that issue, I guess.
But here, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. So let's say somebody comes and they say, we don't want everybody wearing black, right? And we go, we don't really care what, you know, you think. And so we don't address it. That's where I want this neutral third party that's out there to kind of advise us, say, you can choose not to address it. Yeah, you can choose not to address it, but you see what I'm saying?
Kind of, I guess.
Because you really don't, I'm sorry, no, but because you really don't want just give me some person to come with some silly idea like, well, I don't want anyone wearing black to go to the city lawyer.
Yeah, that's not something.
Something silly like that.
Well, if it's not, if it doesn't fall within inside this document, you know, Nate would write up a 37th order and say, hey, I received a complaint that is nothing, you know, unbounded complaint. Here's the report and the case. If it's, if it is something well within the documents, per view, then that's when it could say, hey, I got this. And it's a staff that's in violation, so council, here's what you need to do. Or, or it appears that it's a staff violation, or it's a council person that appears to be in violation.
Then either, older better, and go to Nate.
Yeah, if you, well, I.
See, this is, this is where, this is where I'm confused. I'm confused because, and that's just my brain, right, how it works. I want steps and then so that if this step, which is responsible to look at it, says we're not going to look at it, well, that mean, I mean, we could all decide, oh, we're not going to do it.
Then that is your per view, and that is state law says that. State law says you are the final adjudicator of your own membership. If, if somebody is, if Burry is just acting way out of line, if you guys don't want to take action on it and somehow doesn't get reported up to the state's attorney, that's, that's your per view. If, if he is acting out of line and want to take action, you know, per view. I know the mayor, or not the mayor, the governor can remove local officials. And we saw that same type of investigation go down with the Minnehaha County State's Attorney recently. So, but for the governor to take notice, obviously, in something local and small, it has to be pretty egregious.
Okay, so then again, at least we have something in writing for our resident, where the resident calls Jill and says, what do I do? I feel this is happening. To protect non-confidentiality, Jill has this piece of paper, she says, go do this.
And then it could things, but I'll.
I mean.
I'm trying to think of where something could be handed in confidentially. Again, our attorney's office, if mailed to the attorney, it could be mailed to us, but yeah, if it's a complaint against one of you guys and you're my favorite council person, I can tear it up. But I guess we'd like to keep it professional and that's not going to happen. Same thing with Nate. There's no reason to not think either of you, the people who are going to conduct themselves professionally and take something serious, but needs to be taken serious or not.
I agree with what Mayor was saying that I like the idea of someone that's outside of it. That's not staff, council, but some other committee. Because then you get the question too, if they're on, if they're on zoning or something like that. Well, do they feel some sort of onus up to this board because they're appointed by this board, by this group? Or by the mayor or whatever, but I don't know.
And they can be a receiving entity, but you.
But how you can confirm receipt that these things aren't going to.
Well, when, like you said with the last two though, are we trying to fix them that there isn't an issue for?
I think we need to have some sort of reporting mechanism that people are comfortable with and they believe in. First and foremost, I mean, that's really what it is. Just so that everybody knows that we're being, we're all held accountable, obviously with elections. But on that level of the ethics level, someone who is not part of us, part of the city who feel obligated that they might, oh, just slip this under.
Will they ever though?
Oh, it slipped, fell off my desk and went right into the shredder, I'm sorry.
Right, I mean, are they ever though?
But maybe there's a succession where it starts with you. It goes to the city administrator and then it's your duty to bring it to here. And then, you see what I'm saying? And so.
Then it can be brought up.
It's not resolved here or to the resident's satisfaction. It goes to, I don't know, set their party, whether that be state ethics lawyer or whatever.
You're not going to be able to do that, that enforcement mechanism. Again, I'm trying to separate reporting versus enforcement. State law clarifies who can do what.
Right, and I'm saying if they're not happy with whatever decision we make, that they still have another option somewhere else to further that process.
But he, he's saying, we don't have, they don't have that.
Yeah, and state law doesn't do that. It says who's the final adjudicator and that's you.
Well, like you said, the, the first thing, you know, is, has the law been broken? You know, and that's something we'd have to go to, you know, take it to Nate.
Yeah, that might be a whole other ghetto. Can of worms.
Termination versus, you know, something.
So, yeah, again, the code of ethics is, it rides the fence on what's illegal versus just laying down a code of conduct that seems ethical.
Like.
Obviously, if there's something unethical.
Bribery's in here, you know, receiving gifts that would, would influence you. And bribery is already illegal, but there are, state law also does make it so we can receive gifts from vendors in this state without having to report those. That's, our state law is pretty vague there. Whether that's legislators from here going on over dinner and lobbies and things like that. None of that needs to be reported in the state. But is it actually having an influence?
So then maybe, maybe again, this is just a webpage education thing of, this is what's, this is who the top adjudicator is. If you have a problem, start here. If you feel you have them in her, start here, but this is the board.
Yep.
Kind of like a.
But at least it's something that people feel they have an opportunity to go talk to, they know who to talk to and.
And we can simply say, until we hear back from Nate, and that might change it a little bit, but we can simply say, if you have a complaint and you want to remain anonymous, mail it to us.
It's a good idea.
As simple as that.
And only other thing I was thinking about when we were sitting here is that, or the other option, if there, someone feels strongly about it or they're not worried about anonymity, they send it to the city administrator, the mayor and the president of council.
Okay.
Something.
To make sure that.
Yeah.
Everybody, someone's going to report it. I mean, obviously, we would, we would, we know that all three would be reported, but just to make sure.
Yep. Yeah, and we can include, again, spell that out. If, if, if reporting something that involves staff, include the mayor and council president at the same time that you send it out to the council city administrator. If it's something about council conduct, I don't know that we want staff in on that. Maybe that's where we say council president, mayor and attorney or something. But I'll have that discussion with Nate too, because if it's your misconduct, I don't know that we should be involved necessarily. Investigating, pursuing, discussing.
With this one, I just, I just, I don't think, this is on a different level of the other two, is in my opinion. I think we need to make sure that the people are comfortable reporting their concerns.
And is it violation against ethics or is it?
Well, I mean, a legal.
It should, so and so to be called a.
I think we need to be clear that it's a violation of this document.
Right, right. No, that, I agree, that's a little bit.
Yeah, if you're not happy with just how someone's doing their job or not doing their job, that's different than what's spelled out in that.
But that's the tricky part with ethics is, you know, but, okay, so I'm hearing then, counsel, that A B done, C, a little work to do.
Yeah, I would say come up with a link with, with mayor's at what's.
Like the, the next steps.
Here's your recourse, here's your direction.
Right, and in fact, that, this is it. And just make it very clear. Yes, ma'am?
And as you said, they're the, they're the governing board, so they have the option to do something about it. They can, they can vote, majority vote. If it's somebody who's acting unlawfully, they can get, you know, fired. They can resign with however you want to work that, or then of course, then the voters have their say and say, okay.
Exactly.
So.
Yeah, election is the ultimate. For us, it is the ultimate.
Did you get your comment on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd say, yeah.
I'll bring back something next meeting about.
Thank you.
Now, I'll take number five.
Oh, perfect, okay.
Joe is sick today. I told him that I would talk with you all and if you had any more questions that maybe you would just take away rather than forward this night. One of the things I wanted to do, though, about this is bring us back into, I think maybe the tail is wagging the dog kind of deal. What we have is $120,000 of general fund dollars that are being spent on street lighting fees versus, yeah, street lighting fees from the, from the two electrics. We shouldn't be spending general fund dollar on it. We should either A, own an electric company using profits to pay for that service, or we should be implementing a streetlight to, a user fee to pay for that. Joe had at one time pointed out a very good point about user fees in this regard. Everybody drives on every street, right? So a particular house that's bigger or smaller than another one shouldn't pay more or less. That's why this is a flat fee. We all have the ability to drive down every single street in town. What, what we originally, originally were trying to achieve with this was not come up with money to fund possible electrical projects or lighting projects in the future. It was to fill a $120,000 hole in our budget. I mean, we're, I shouldn't say hole because it's covered today, but it is money in the general fund that shouldn't be being spent.
That we can be using for real.
Right, you know, it, one of the things that when I discuss with county officials and when it comes to road funding, like, you know, if you aren't utilizing all of your funding mechanisms, then shame on you. And I feel like that for us a little bit too, if we have a way to create a revenue stream. Because it's not like we just created a streetlight, state law created a streetlight, we're going to come back to you tomorrow with a sidewalk fee and, and the next day with a, some other fee. These are things that were created and long for a reason, for us to use to, to fund our city. And another thing to put in perspective, $2 is generates 50,000 a year. 50,000 a year would cover about a $680,000 loan over the course of 20 years. If we get up to $4, we're half, we could fund a half of the Clip and Willow intersection using our general fund dollars, saying rather than our money, that general fund money going over to paying Excel and Southeastern.
We mentioned we should run our own, how much mon, I mean, do we have any sort of dollar figure, how expensive that would be to do?
To run our own?
Yeah. That would be taking over everything, you know, like you said.
An engineer will charge us hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that.
I mean, it'd just be exorbitant.
Yeah, it's, because you, first you go through this process of condemnation about what's already out there. You condemn, take away from Southeastern and, and you pay them what it's worth. And then they're going to fight you for Ohio on territory. So, yeah, that would be a very convoluted process.
Not obscure, but it just. Does Sioux Falls even own their own?
They own a portion of it, a portion. There's a certain territory within the city they serviced before the corporations came along and they continue to service that area, but that area doesn't grow.
And you said that Wagner did it?
Wagner attempted, they were the last city to attempt to do it.
Okay.
I don't know how that went.
Yeah, I think it just didn't go very well. And then, of course, this last.
It's just so hard to do.
Yeah, and of course, this last summer had the summer study from the legislature where the, the co-ops like Southeastern, not the, but not the investor owned like South, like Excel, are attempting to lock the territory of cities so they can no longer grow with their municipal electrics. That's something that we're not directly involved in per se, because we don't have one, but the municipal league has been asking for our solidarity with towns like Vermillion and elsewhere, peer that have municipal electors. So that is what I wanted to say in regards to that streetlight fee. It's, you know, it wasn't necessarily meant to be, until we're generating more than $120,000, more than what we're paying for to Excel and Southeastern.
We should just try and grant a ban.
Right, we should just be, be happy that we're freeing up general fund dollars to go for, for general fund obligations.
Have we anticipated what it's going to go to when these developments are built on?
Joe has a, Joe would have a pretty good estimate of. Joe has a, Joe would have a pretty good estimate of phasing, right? You know, there's how often a streetlight is put in and the phasing, and he could probably give us a two, two, three, four, five year idea of what our costs, right? If they stay with the correct phasing, so on. Assuming that there isn't, and how the inflationary increase from the electric companies.
Is it the same rate between the two entities, Southeastern and Excel? I don't think Southeastern had it much.
I don't think I've compared the two.
It's curious, that's a flat.
Yeah, I don't know, that's something governed by the utilities commission, so it's flatter. So, I don't know if you want to go tonight or wait for Joe, but my case.
Do you think Joe can shed any other light?
Would be curious to know how much more it's going to cost us.
Certainly come back with that the next conference.
I mean, and we do still have.
Oh, you mean like four, five years' time?
Yep, based on the developments that we know we have today, how many more new streetlights do we have coming into the system?
So you're even thinking, let's not set it now, you're thinking, let's try to project the future, so it might be two dollars and twenty-five cents or something.
Well, I was like thinking like a dollar fifty or something like that. I mean, anybody I've talked to have mentioned, I don't know, like, a dollar, two dollars, I'm gonna be a little deal, but that's not everybody. So, I mean, we're talking about twenty-four dollars a year, which isn't a huge amount, but that's my view on it. That's, I'm not gonna say that's the view of everybody's view, wanna go.
Fifth income households.
Some people are, have a harder time with it, or have a hard time financially, poor time. That's why I'm constantly back and forth about it. I, I fully support and understand and like the idea, at the same time, I hate it.
Do you want to build a click and will intersection?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, this is the, this is the start of it. No, this is all of it. If you were to erase the hole in our general fund budget that we're spending on this, that's close to one and a half million dollars in debt, in debt service that we could go after.
If we go through the whole.
Right.
Right, and, and so in that regard, we're talking to an entirety.
It was only five dollars.
Right.
Yeah, I know Joe said that five dollars would be what we need to cover the whole thing. That's a big jump in my book.
I think you hit on something, or I'm sorry, Alderman, you might have drawn it. Where I think that might be helpful to have Joe do that.
Yep.
Because then that also helps us justify.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I like that.
So I had a conversation with Joe, and we'll bring back him next week.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a motion to table that for Joe next meeting?
No.
Okay, the last item that we have is employee wage adjustment for Chris.
Chris Colander passed his, I gotta get it right, water distribution class two certification. And within our personnel manual, when they get certifications that are passed, they're due for a fifty percent raise. So this would bring his wage up to eighteen oh one, beginning with pay period twenty-five.
I moved aside Chris Colander's wage at eighteen oh one, beginning with pay period twenty-five for water distribution class two certification, second.
Hey, Mary, or Mary, it's the move in second, and Mary, roll call please.
Hank?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
Maxwell?
Hi.
Do you have anything for Joe tonight?
Do we need to go back to another one?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, good question, to decide if we're going to. Put a long description for you to review there, but it really seemed like it was themes, I believe it is usage for sprinkler, that they just weren't aware how much was going through their sprinkler system being residents. And once they figured it out, and the sprinkler system shut off, the usage went down to a normal usage for our families. It's back to normal, so.
Have any of them talked to either one of the PBA in particular? Because normally what happens is when the, when water is here, we just don't make a decision, we just don't address it. So I don't want to like, say yes or no, unless, unless he says, I can't make it, because you're pleased.
I have something for Joe, I don't. I keep this in, to the all very briefly this afternoon, but yeah, please, Bill. And so while I've already explained with you and Mary, you put it on social media, I just thought I would say it here, so that it'll be on the website, what happened with the outdoor warning sirens on Saturday. The, when I spoke with Todd, the head of communications, he kind of explained it to me like this. He said, he said that codes are stacked on top of each other, or you could think of them sequentially. So he said, imagine one code being seventy-three and the next one ninety-one. But if the program put the comma in the wrong spot, then it, it created the code seventeen. You grabbed the one from one and the seven from the other, the other, and all of a sudden you had code seventeen being called out across the radio, and that's what happened. So they had upgraded that computer where that's responsible for those tones to be sent across the radio to activate either your pagers or your sirens. They attempted to do their, I can't remember if it was a monthly or weekly check of the pagers in Centerville and Hudson that set off our alarms that night. Of course, they didn't know the person who, who was on staff, because they didn't have any administrative staff around that night. They weren't able to give that explanation, understandable. But this morning, they were pretty quick and able to give that explanation of, of what had happened.
Did they know that was false, though? They didn't even know that?
That is.
False.
That was.
Yeah, I mean, they, I mean, honestly.
Had they not received a phone call from us, I don't know that they would have known.
Okay, got it, okay.
Yes, because, yeah, I don't know if, I don't know, when they do a test of your fire department pagers, do you guys call in to say, hey, yes, I did or didn't get that?
No, it's a daily test.
Okay.
And ours for Harrisburg is at six o'clock every day, Centerville Hudson will be at five thirty. But no, we do not respond to that, it's a daily test, just so we know our pagers are working.
So it's quite possible they wouldn't have known if there was an issue then if we had a call.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is, I know we want to use code red sparingly, but is this one of those things that we could have just sent out? I know the school has told us about breaks in weather or breaks in school, homecoming week. I mean, so they're using their sparingly as well, but is this a situation where we could have said, this is a false alarm, we'll know more Monday, Gary?
You know, I felt like people were already upset by the invasion of the noise in their lives. They could have, you know, outdoor warning center, and it's just that, right? It's just supposed to let you know if you're outdoors to go inside and turn on the news. If you turn on the news and nothing's there, you're, you're okay. I, I, I feel like code red in every instance, whether it's appropriate or not, what it's doing is that we're hopping into people's homes. You know, we're making their phone jingle at dinner, or, or in a meeting, or when they're trying to put their kid down. And we had already made that invasion, that invasion had already occurred in outdoor warnings there. And additionally, it takes, what, Mary, ten, fifteen minutes for a code red?
Probably, at least.
And it takes all the thirty seconds for a Facebook post. Could we have, absolutely, but that was my thought process in not using it. But if, it is something, you know, obviously, this was such a one-off.
Yeah, so, so odd.
It was, it would have been, we would have never had a, a plan for this very particular item, I don't think, but.
But, but even like the ice storm in thirteen?
Sure.
You know, crazy things like that, that, like you said, are one-offs. But if we do have that mechanism that says, I mean, obviously, the school must plan this more, it's gonna be homecoming week and that kind of stuff.
Sure.
But if there's something that, that, you know, at the discretion of whomever, that we just say, quick communication, boom, done. I, I would even like to be able to use a texting, just code with red text.
You can do an email text.
Even the second one you sign up.
I get all three.
I get all three. So can we, can we then put that in our communication plan that we will be? Here's my concern, my concern is not everybody has Facebook.
Yep.
And so then you, without communication, you have people making up stuff.
Sure.
And so even if we sent it out and we say, I'm sorry, you're not on our list, give us our phone, your phone number, then we, then it's open to everybody, and they really have no reason to not.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll have some type of criteria for two different one-offs. One-offs that are emergencies, and how code red will be used with some predictability, and not emergency one-off, things like this one. Because I would call this not emergency, I guess.
Yeah, it would be like a false, false emergency.
False emergency, yeah.
It's generally when you hear alarm, those alarms go up at night, you're like, crap, there's a tornado.
Right.
But obviously, that wasn't, unless we're getting them, kind of tornado.
It was the bomb cyclone.
They can choose also whether to get just emergency or general qualification.
Yeah.
Choose, okay, um, choose the whole way to get emergency.
Well, and again, this is a good opportunity for us to go back and say, you can get these, you can get them via text, you can get them, whatever. You know, and in these situations, we only will send out texts, or we only will send out whatever.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's a tricky one.
Yes, hard to foresee, I mean, maybe we should have known after, but why?
Expect that to go off and go to the thirty of us, but.
My favorite hypothesis was, um, some of the creature from Stranger Things, somebody thought that that's what predicted what.
Oh, but I'm upside down.
It happened.
Hey, anything else, Andrew? Hey, anything, Alderman? Alderman. Maxwell?
I don't have any.
Alderman, same.
No.
Alderman, also. Nothing as well, I just wanted to thank you and those guys for coming up tonight for that conversation, I think it'll be interesting tomorrow, so. I have nothing, I'll take a moment to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn at six forty-two, second.
Thanks, and we'll be in second, and I'll go as a favor, seeing if I have a say night.
All right.
Thank you.